Okay, thank you very much. We're going to call the meeting of the Sacramento City Council and Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Authority to order at 2:01 PM, June 13, 2023. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the rule to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
I expect Mayor Protan Wang momentarily, and Mayor Steinberg momentarily, and Vice Mayor Guerra.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask Councilmember Kaplan if she wouldn't mind reading the land acknowledgement and pledge of allegiance for us.
Absolutely, everyone. Please stand. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento indigenous peoples and tribal lands to the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu, the Valley and Plains Miwok, the Putwin-Wintune peoples, and the peoples of Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Please remain standing. Turn. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very much. Thank you all. Mr. Mayor, the gavel's all yours.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Sorry, I'm a minute late. Missed the pledge. Apologize. Hi, everyone.
Good afternoon, Mayor. We're on item number one, which is annual reports of the housing trust fund ordinance, mixed-income housing ordinance, home investment partnership program, and residential hotel unit withdrawal, conversion, and demolition ordinance.
Please. Hi.
Hello.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Whitney Bonner, and I'm the Program Manager in Development Finance and Portfolio Management. This is the housing workshop to review affordable housing projects and funding for the 2022 calendar year. This also serves as SHRA's annual reporting on the three city ordinances, housing trust fund ordinance, mixed-income housing ordinance, and single-room occupancy ordinance, as well as two additional affordable housing funding sources administered by SHRA, home and permanent local housing allocation, or PLHA. The city of Sacramento has two development impact programs, one for residential and another for non-residential development. The revenues generated depends upon the fee per square foot of new construction and the amount of building which occurs in any given year. The city housing trust fund ordinance authorizes the collection of impact fees on non-residential construction to fund low and very low-income housing. The housing trust fund ordinance was adopted in 1989, and to date, there has been $38.9 million collected in fees, plus $12.5 million in repayments from loans made with the funds. In 2022, $963,000 were collected in fees, with $209,000 in expenditures. The mixed-income housing ordinance is an affordable housing impact fee for all new housing developments with the goal of increasing the supply available for low-income workers. $6.6 million have been collected since 2015, when the ordinance was revised to a fee-based ordinance. In 2022, $464,000 were collected in fees and $548,000 in expenditures. SHRA administers the State of California Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program, or PLHA, which is an entitlement grant program on behalf of the city. The PLHA funds are generated through recording fees on real estate transactions. 20% of those funds must be reserved for single-family down payment assistance, and the remaining 80% is used for multifamily housing projects. In 202022, the beginning balance of $2.3 million were available for funding, single-family and multifamily. There weren't any expenditures in 2022, however, Central Sacramento Studios and on-Broadway Apartments are under construction. SHRA administers the federal entitlements grants from HUD on behalf of the city. Home funds are used for multifamily housing production or preservation. These funds have hard deadlines for expenditure, and it's critical that we identify eligible projects so that we are never in a position of returning funds to the federal government. In 2022, City Home generated $2.5 million in entitlements, with $3.9 million in loan repayments. There are now six projects under construction utilizing the home funds. In 2022, the four funding sources that were just discussed totaled $6.5 million, with an additional $16.4 million generated from loans previously made with SHRA. Loan repayments allow SHRA to reinvest in needed affordable housing. However, not all projects have the ability to make loan repayments. For example, permanent supportive housing or homeless projects typically have payments structured at 0% interest and payable at term of a loan, or it can be structured as residual receipts payments. The single-room occupancy ordinance is also reported in the staff report. SHRA requires to provide an annual update on the number of residential hotel units downtown, withdrawn, and the number of units constructed annually. In 2022, there were no changes to the units withdrawn or added. This concludes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public testimony on the item?
Mayor, I have no hands raised and no speaker slips and chambers on this item.
Okay. Members, well, thank you for the presentation. Obviously, the term "housing trust fund" is really, really important, and we are grappling with you, the agency and as a city, about how we might increase the amount of money that goes into that housing trust fund so that we can invest in more projects, more workforce and affordable housing. And I know this is a topic of intense discussion among, you know, members within the city, the staff, with various care holders that are interested in this, and so we can do so much more with more resources, and we've got to figure out a way to find them. Remember, just go on for a second here, remember that just prior to COVID, we had a green light, or at least close to a green light, to issue a large affordable housing bond out of Measure U, one of these sort of original promises, and of course, we couldn't because everything collapsed, at least temporarily. Now we're coming back, and as we approach 2024, I hope, and I insist, that collectively we figure out how we get more money into a trust fund to support more affordable housing. And I know I'm not alone in that point of view. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's a conversation that all of us on City Council welcome, knowing what we need to do. We look at what's been done, which is great, as new, and I see all these programs. I am wondering, have we looked at or have reports, I know we get an annual report, but have we looked at where we're spending our money is the most effective? As we go into these conversations, Mayor, I think it's, you know, what have we found as a city where the best use of our taxpayer dollars are? Where does it stretch more? Where do we get more units? Where is it more beneficial? Because I know a big item was looking at our residential hotel units that we used to have downtown, that then, you know, 80s and 90s disappeared, and now we're looking at that, you know, what is the future on not just holding, but potentially looking at that expansion downtown, but as well as looking throughout the city? Because in D1, we do have some of the units that are part of the housing trust fund, you know, and how do we balance that? Because I think the annual report, if you actually click into the item, is really well-written, so thank you for that, because it had a lot of detail of where we spread it out throughout the city. But I think that's important when we talk about equities, that there is the ability to rent or live throughout the city where there is affordability, and that it's not just concentrated in certain areas. But I'm also interested, as we further this conversation, what information is there out there for me to look at? Do we get the biggest bang for our buck on our housing trust fund? Is that the best use of our dollars? Or how is our mixed-income housing ordinance working or not working? You know, where is it that we need to look or concentrate, or potentially, what are the barriers that the city has so that this is something? Because we know during the flood moratorium, you know, the city kind of got the short end of the stick, where we'd probably have 5,000 more housing units and more affordability units already for residents in those, but the moratorium kind of hurt us in the early 2010s as we were going through that. But just if there is information out there to send me, and as we have this conversation, Mayor, I think it's relevant that that's part of the conversation. Thank you.
Of course. I mean, I think it's a good question. I think we're both strategic and opportunistic. Strategic in the sense that we're looking at where the needs are, but opportunistic, and I mean that in a positive sense of the word, right, where you have the right partner and, you know, that old cliche of shovel-ready, and you're entitled, you're ready to go. We have to, you know, I'm a volume person. It's like, how many thousands of units can we get to, right? And then work to shape it and make sure that it is equitable. I'm looking at page three of the report. So is our ending balance really $8.7 million? I mean, is that the amount of money we had going into 2020, or is that all been committed now?
No, it's the balance available for projects, 1.2.
Read it. Ah, the balance available for projects. I see, because 7.4 is needed for the existing projects. Got it. So, I mean, again, I think that speaks to both, you know, the creativeness of the agency in terms of making every dollar work and stretching it, but really, if we're honest about it, 1.29 million left for a city that is growing, that has these incredible needs? Come on. We need a funded housing program. It was going to be Measure U, maybe we get back to it, and a bond, whether we have to go to the voters or not, but maybe let's get back to that. I mean, setting aside X million a year to create the capital for 10 times that amount, that's worth considering. We were there, and we had to stop, but only temporarily. Anybody else? Councilmember Talamontes?
So I know in our current budget, we're allocating $3 million towards housing, right? So can we work with our planning department and SHRA to figure out how we can make the best use for our dollars?
Which, is this in this budget that we're passing, presumably passing tonight? I need to...
Okay.
Okay.
We'll double-check on that one. I know that there was $3 million out, we were setting aside, or maybe it was grant funding that we got, but I just want to make sure that the $3 million that we did receive goes towards SHRA to make sure that we can make use of our dollars.
Yeah, we're right.
I'll get back to you.
We'll check that number. Yeah, let's check that number. But, very good. Okay, thank you for bringing this out. It does, I think, point us towards where we need to go in the future. Appreciate it. All right. We'll move now to the next item, and that is 3.4 million mixed-income housing funds for the rehabilitation of the Sequoia Hotel. Please.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Whitney Bonner here again, Program Manager in Development Finance and Portfolio Management. Staff is requesting approval of a funding commitment in the amount of $3.4 million in mixed-income housing funds for the Sequoia project. The Sequoia Hotel originally opened in 1910 and is located at 911 K Street in downtown Sacramento. The Sequoia Hotel is subject to Sacramento's SRO Residential Hotels Ordinance that requires relocation benefits to be paid to residents in the event of conversion or demolition of one of the remaining hotels. Any remaining residents at the time of acquisition will have relocation benefits and services provided. The project has fallen into serious disrepair, and is critically in need of extensive rehabilitation. California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, foreclosed on the property last year and are now the new owners. HCD approached the John Stewart Company and requested that they acquire the property and renovate it with funds from HCD's portfolio reinvestment program. The John Stewart Company applied for and was awarded $44.6 million in portfolio reinvestment program funds on May 31 of this year to rehabilitate 88 permanent supportive housing units and one manager's unit. The John Stewart Company applied to Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency for $3.4 million in capitalized operating reserves to ensure required property management and case management for residents. The project was awarded 100% project-based vouchers earlier this year. Units will be restricted to homeless households. There are a total of 89 units, which includes one manager's unit. 73 of those units are single-room occupancy, where the residents will have access to community, bathrooms, and kitchens. The remaining 15 units are studios, which will have bathrooms and kitchenettes with stove-top burners. All units will include microwaves for residents. Substantial interior improvements will be made, including all-new kitchenettes, bathrooms, flooring, elevators, and stairwells. Amenities will include 24/7 desk coverage. The commercial space on the first floor will be converted to residential service offices, community rooms, and computer rooms. Also included will be a laundry room, mailroom, and a bike room for residents. Resident services and case management will be offered by Lutheran Social Services. They will provide a minimum of 20 hours per week of onsite resident services, and will have onsite case management offering for full-time case managers. The project will be managed by the John Stewart Company, who has directly managed over 3,500 market-rate and affordable housing units in the Sacramento region. In closing, staff is requesting approval of $3.4 million in funding for a capitalized operating reserve for the Sequoia project. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you very much. We have two members who are up to speak, but we do have public testimony on this item. Go ahead.
Can I take that first?
Yes, please.
Mayor, I have three speakers in chambers. The first is Juan Venegas, Chris Palomo, and then Marie Trevino.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Juan Venegas, and I'm a field representative for the NorCal Carpenters Union here in Sacramento County. I just want to touch on something important about this project, that's going to be the labor. Construction workers desire and deserve to earn a livable wage while having a beneficial career. They are part of great communities all throughout Sacramento County. That's why I believe labor standards language is critical for future projects. Specific language like apprenticeship, healthcare, and local hire would improve thousands of construction workers' lives. Our apprenticeship programs allow workers to learn skills on the job and in a classroom setting with certified instructors. As they progress through the apprenticeship, many will obtain college credits. Our apprenticeship programs elevate the living standards of individuals by providing a debt-free education. With this in mind, construction workers will be able to secure jobs in their communities and give them a sense of purpose and belonging. Healthcare is an important part of this language, since roughly 50% of California construction workers rely on some type of public assistance to be able to provide a type of healthcare for their families. The lack of healthcare is a reason that keeps workers away from the industry and creates a shortage in the workforce. Local hire would benefit the community several ways. Carbon emissions would be reduced, since less miles would be driven to get to work. The families within the community would have a better work-life balance, which would allow for a greater quality of life. These families that help make up the community would have more opportunities for community involvement. Labor standards language like apprenticeship, healthcare, and local hire will create a level of standards and will cultivate a responsible market while giving construction workers what they deserve. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Chris Palomo.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Chris Palomo, and I'm also a field rep with the NorCal Carpenters Union right here at a Local 46 in Sacramento. I'd like to talk more about what my colleague was talking about with the construction workers that are building this project. You know, a lot of these women are taken advantage of on these projects. These developers, they come in here and they preach words like "community" and "building a better community" and "helping out," but how are they doing that when they're making money on the backs of these workers? They pay them so and such a low wage, that's why most of them end up homeless, living in their car, because they can't afford to live in these houses that they're building here, or they're pushed to San Francisco to go out there where they can earn a livable wage, and therefore, they're commuting back and forth, three to four hours, away from their family, away from their children, not able to enjoy those precious times with them. It's unacceptable. We are the capital. Every city should look at us as an example. These developers, they do the right thing over there in San Francisco and in the Bay Area, so why do we allow them to come here and make their money on the backs of these workers? They pick irresponsible contractors who don't care about these workers except for making a profit, and it's got to stop. We got to have some type of labor standards to do that, make them do the right thing, because they're not going to do the right thing on their own. Alls they care about is making money. They don't care about the community, and they do not care about the workers. So I urge you as a leadership of this city to please do something about this. Let's make a change. Like I said, we are the capital. Everyone should look to us, not us look to the Bay Area for all the workers.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Marie Trevino, and then call-in user one.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'd first like to thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Marie Trevino, and I am a union carpenter here in the Sacramento area, Local 46. As the council takes this project into consideration, I'd like you to keep a few things in mind. First and foremost, the local construction projects do matter to the hard-working men and women who build these local projects. A couple of questions that need to be addressed and should be asked on this project and every local project in Sacramento area is, will there be a commitment to use local hire, reinvest back into our community matters? Also, will the contractors building this project be required to pay carpenter-area standard wages and benefits, and provide the workers on these projects with healthcare? I'm a single mom with three kids and been able to live a livable wage and having healthcare to support my kids on my own. It is very vital to me. Before joining the carpenters union, I did not have any healthcare and made very low wages that I needed government assistance just to survive. I don't want to have to return to that ever again, and I wouldn't want any of my fellow workers or anyone to have to rely on government assistance. I now own my home and was able to put my kids through school and watch them grow up and raise a family. And lastly, will the project be required to use a state-certified apprenticeship program? The use of these programs help reinvest and educate of the next generation. Projects with no commitment or contractor requirements just add to the downward pressure on our community and the workers who build it. So before you approve this project, please make sure to hold these developers and contractors accountable so the workers aren't taken advantage of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is call-in user one online.
Yes, this is Lambert, and I'm calling about what I'm hearing, because I know a lot of people who are construction workers, and I know a lot of people who commute outside Sacramento to get to the Bay and then get back. That's a heck of a run, Sacramento to the Bay Area, just going down there to visit. That's a good run. If they have a family back in Sacramento, that's tough. So I would think that before the developer would be able to even secure this, they would have to put in writing that they're going to do right by the workers, because if they don't live here, then they don't really care about the community. They're coming in to make a buck and get on to the next site. So I'm glad these people are coming up and expressing their concerns, and they have my support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right. Thank you to the members of the public. Let's now turn it over to the members of the City Council, starting with Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. I am thrilled about this project, but I'm going to get more to that in a minute. I'm wondering, LaShelle or your team, if you could speak at all to the labor standards piece of this funding and of this project?
Sure. I'll give that a try. Councilmember Valenzuela, Christine Weigert, Director of Development Finance. So the construction dollars coming to this project are from the State of California, the Housing and Community Development Department, so they will require state prevailing wages. That's one thing. In addition, the agency provided housing choice vouchers to this project, which require federal prevailing wages, or Davis Bacon. And of course, part of the federal prevailing wages is Section 3 applies, which means we must require developers to do outreach to our public housing residents, to our low-income residents within our jurisdiction, which is in the city of Sacramento, to recruit and try to hire folks from there. So we also, I'm proud of the agency, we have a variety of touchpoints with the developer, not only just our legal documents that require this, but we have kickoff meetings with all of our developers and their construction crews, their general contractors, to make sure they understand that they have these requirements, that they meet with our Department of Economic Opportunity, with our procurement department, with our construction staff, and we help them with their outreach. So it's not just carpenters or other trades, but it's all trades, whether it be plumbers or electricians, but we work very hard to try to get them to hire locally and make sure they're paying those prevailing wages.
Thank you, Christine. Are the federal and state requirements, do those include things like healthcare or apprenticeship?
My understanding is they're tied to the wages. I think it's up to the general contractors, the individual contractors, if they provide healthcare or not.
At this stage of the project agreements, given that it's pretty far down the line, is it possible for the council to tie any sort of, like, local hire, apprenticeship, healthcare requirements in addition to the prevailing wage requirements?
I would have to see if that would have any cost effect on the project. However, I will say, our funds here locally are just going to the operating of the project, so that would also be something we'd have to talk to the State of California about.
Okay. Could that be like direction in terms of follow-up as part of my motion today?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay, awesome. And can you give, while you're on the microphone, can you talk a little bit more about the relocation assistance that residents that are currently in the Sequoia will receive?
Absolutely. I think there's 36 residents there today, and all of those residents, if they're, which I'm sure they probably will be when construction starts, probably, you know, later this month, maybe next month, they will be temporarily relocated, which means we will make sure that there's a relocation specialist to help them find that temporary housing, pay all of the expenses related to living in their daily lives during that temporary location, and then they'll be moved back, no expense to them. However, if a few of the residents, maybe they're over income after this project is complete, they'll be permanently relocated, which means they'll be provided rent and subsidy for quite a long period of time.
Okay, that's excellent. I want to put some context on this. Thank you, Christine, for my council colleagues. You may remember a woman's come in here a few times named Sharon, who has a walker. We've known her. Now Senator Ashby and I knew her from way back in the warming center days at the Galleria when she was a client there. She is now a resident at Sequoia, and so she's been coming to this council for a while to talk about management, to talk about repairs, to talk about safety at this building. So I just wanted to put a personal touch on why this project is so important for District 4. We've been hearing consistently from residents in this building, from the businesses and residents around this building, that there's been a problem, and I'm just so excited that HCD and now SHRA heard our calls for help. I did not expect it to happen this quickly. When it went into receivership and was sold, we thought, oh, no, what does this mean? How are we going to get this place fixed? And so to come forward with a solution like this and to be willing to tie in those labor standards, if possible, to the agreement, and to be able to relocate the residents and to have them come back and to be able to keep those affordable units, like, this is the sort of solution that we just don't often get to see. And so I just really want to commend the team for putting this together. This is beyond my wildest dreams and expectations for this property, so I'm really excited to move this item with that direction on the labor standards piece, and really hope my colleagues will support it today. It's an incredible opportunity site right in the central city, and the residents and the businesses around it, I know, have been calling for change for a really long time. So I want to applaud the team for figuring this out and send my thanks to HCD, who might be watching this meeting from somewhere in their state office buildings, for them doing this as quickly as they have to address this need. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Guerra?
Well, Councilmember Maple beat me to the second there, and with the direction also to look at the labor standards, as well as the apprenticeship and healthcare requirements. But I just wanted to say, I still recall as a kid when we would wait in line on J Street at the INS office when we were applying for our immigration adjustment to status and... And, and even since then, I, back then, there used to be a McDonald's out there, I think, on K, a couple of blocks next, or a couple of buildings over next to it. It's, that building has seen better days a long time ago, so it's great for that building to actually see renovation now. So, you know, all third, thirded, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations, great work. Councilmember Valenzuela.
It is thirded officially. Councilmember Laloie.
Thank you. What's the timeline on this project?
I believe the timeline is within, well, maybe more aggressive than this, but I'm going to say 18 months, 18 months.
I'm sorry to... And as far as the total amount that the developer is asking for or has been committed to, is that a fixed amount? Are we gonna, are they going to need more once they start rehabbing it and finding other issues?
This, the, the 3.4 we're requesting is for operating reserves, not for construction, so it'll be for, to provide services and property management at the site long-term, so there's...
At a later time, if they find any issues, they're not going to come to us for added help for construction or rehab?
No, I'm happy, I'm happy to say that our construction staff has reviewed their scope of work, the cost estimates for the project. They fully believe what's the, the cost of the project identified in this report can be, you know, can build the project within that 18-month timeline. There's a, a pretty healthy contingency, too. But I would add to the council always, if there's ever cost savings, that SHRA make sure that we, we receive some of those cost savings if there are, you know, to get the money back. We don't release it, actually. So we only pay for what costs have occurred.
But if there's a cost increase, they're not going to come back to the city and ask us to fulfill that difference?
No, again, this contingency of $3.7 million is, is, should be plenty.
And then you indicated that all the residents are going to be relocated. Where are they getting relocated to?
They, there will be a third-party relocation specialist that works with them. Many of them want to stay near the property that they're leaving in hopes of coming back, so probably many of them will want to go, stay in the downtown area. However, that's not always true. Sometimes folks might have relatives in another part of the city or the county of Sacramento, and they want to go live closer to them. It, it really varies.
So would you let us know, especially if they're going to be relocated within the city of Sacramento, outside of downtown, whoever districts that you find a suitable place, would you make sure that we know about it in advance and, and verify it with us? Thank you.
I just wanted to...
Oh, yes, please.
I just wanted to chime in. To the extent that we have that information about where people are located, because it really is a very personal decision, that they work one-on-one with the, with the consultant to talk about where their needs are, and it can vary widely, so we don't necessarily always have that information, but to the extent that we do, we could provide that.
All right, we have a motion and a second and a third. There might have been a fourth. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain, that measure passes. Thank you very much. That concludes the Housing Authority agenda for this afternoon. Do we do, do we take public testimony on items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, do you have one hand raised? From Lambert Davis?
Hello, yes, this is Lambert. I, I would like to first send a shout-out to the SHRA. I've always been impressed with them. I remember when Cassandra Jennings was the executive director of SHRA. That's how long and far back I go with the SHRA. I've always found them to have integrity, especially when they're called to answer. They, they usually have the answer, especially if LaShaw Dozier is, is responding, because they have the answer there. That's a, that's a very good organization. They, the mayor did a good job figuring out how to get them some money, because they deserve it, because they, they, I can't remember a scandal they've been caught in. And I also would like to, to end by saying, Mayor, we hope, we meaning specifically Del Paso Heights, we really hope that you will reschedule your, your mayor town hall meeting. You, you are well thought of in Del Paso Heights. I don't know about District Two, that's a big district, gerrymander district, actually. But they gave you the, the state trophy in that photo. That was a big honor, because they could have given that trophy to anyone. So their parents and grandparents are waiting to hear from you, not just them, they're teenagers. So we hope you make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you, thank you very, very much. Are there any housing-related items, Housing Authority items, that members would like to bring up or discuss off-agenda here? If not, we do have the City Council meeting at 5:00, where we take up the city budget for the next fiscal year. So if there's nothing else to come before the Housing Authority and the City Council, thank you all very much, Ms. Dozier and your team, we are adjourned.